Okay, we will call the regular meeting of Nevada City Council to order Monday, May 9th at 6:00 PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brian Hanson.
Here.
Barb Midman.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Jason. No discussion, all their council, please vote. No light.
Go.
Smack.
Oh, God, I broke it again.
I got it. There's a channel.
Thought you were gonna go.
Four and three.
What is that? Is that the ending?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Next item is a consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve and Barb. Seeing no discussion.
I have discussion.
No, okay.
You didn't ask. I was waiting for you to ask.
Great for you to jump in.
I would like, and I think I've said this before, it would be nice, when we have like, like Ryan's got maps and stuff in there for like, you know, the planning and zoning stuff. It would be nice when we do abatements to maybe have a little map of where they're at. I know we have an address, but I don't know that everybody on council takes the time to drive around and look at it like I do. But, I mean, it just might help a little reference. I don't know if that's a big deal or not. Maybe I haven't rounded up before, but it would be nice, you know, then, because somebody might not know where Nevada Street is. I think everyone probably does, but just, just the thought. I mean, I'm not stomping my feet, just a thought. It would, it would be nice, make it a little easier.
Thumbs up from.
You want to exterior picture of like the addition?
No, 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 I mean, just like that plat map like he gave us for these re-zonings, you know, just where it is in town.
Location.
Just shows location. It doesn't have to be pictures of the house and the addition and all that, just like, just like a plat map of where it's at.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. Cool, thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
Council, please vote. Which gets us into the public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, and no action may be taken. And the first item we have is for Nevada Economic Development Week proclamation. So we'll have Brenda come up and give you a preview, and then we have an official proclamation that I'll present to her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening, tonight, to actually officially celebrate Economic Development Week. And thank you to those of you that join, were able to join us on Friday, and what a wonderful example of some of the economic development that we've had a chance to bring around the last couple of years. So what an outstanding project was fun to officially dedicate that. I've got, it was a good year, the actual, we all had a chance to sit on on Nevada. We highlighted a lot of the projects that, that we've all worked on together over the last year. So, and what I'm saying is, we're looking ahead to the current year and forward. We've got some exciting things in the pipeline, and then together we can have a lot of turn around forward. So I take your questions related back to our development. I know there is a proclamation. I'm gonna slip off and take a quick photo of, of them. They are doing, reading that, and we'll make sure we push it out to digital media. See, the official picture taker is in the doorway, so. Oh, that, that works as well.
Yep, yeah, I can come up there, but I will read the whole thing. It's in your packet, but it says, "Therefore, I, Brett Barker, mayor of the city of Nevada, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2022 through May 15th, 2022, as Economic Development Week, in appreciation of all of our partners in the economic development field due to make the city of Nevada the vibrant and thriving community it is today."
So, thank you for your support. It's a great partnership. We have a large number of investors that contribute to the organization as well, and so very generous support that comes from the city. So, thanks so much, and have a good Economic Development Week.
Thanks, Brenda. And then we have a presentation from Flummerfelt Country Club Properties.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Mike Flummerfelt, and Jordan asked me to come tonight and just build with you about, we have a quad members of Flummerfelt's home community, which are within the state. And of course, the family has had a nice, lovely, happy month, so all the moms in the, on the room, so that was kind of important day. Before I get into too many things about, and how all this all happened, we'll probably thank you for some city staff. You know, first, you know, several months ago, when this kind of started becoming an idea, you know, it came up and did with Ryan, and he's been extraordinarily important to the process. He's been very helpful, very encouraging, shed a light on different things that was gonna be helpful for us moving forward, you know, if the project happened. And so I'm gonna reach out and say thank you to Jordan. And it's been some, you know, he's been a huge student of Nevada, you know, I'm sure you guys don't know that, but, you know, he knows as much about that as you know about yourself, it seems like, but nobody that he doesn't really know about. And he's part of that, everybody that's around town, so I really appreciate Ryan and all his hard knowledge and what he can do for us going forward. Sean Redwick has been very comfortable, even just with the word stuff and waters, and he was very helpful in doing the walk through effect with her down there. Just gave us some background, some history and some knowledge about the property. And Joe, is that correct, I have a question. So, yeah, so Joe's been very helpful, you know, Joe's been helping us with Storms Through out there. And that's coming to be, I think, and we'll see how that, how that all works out. So, some white team is here tonight, and I can understand, first time I've done this myself. So she's definitely, so if you're likely to, you can go to the back as well. But generally, Joe, so Joe, you all are properties, now they're assistant, does a great job, is a great researcher, so. My friend, David, and Tim Bennett, so she does a great job, so she always seems to have her sales that goes on, other assets, and send my phone to them. So that's also property management, so. Sorry, with our short-term plans, and also in time to, I think the questions are just, you know, a bit bad for you, because it's some topics. Yeah, and actually, you really didn't know what to expect, you know, when you go to that neighborhood, it's got a, got a reputation. And, and we're kind of a reputation, and so it was kind of like, fifty ashes, you know, and so as we, as we took over that there, and this is what, of course, we took over on Monday. And so at first, we were just trying to get to know people, you know, just, we were a little bit of a place, you know, and just kind of get a grip on the ground and, you know, get out there and just meet some people. And we're, you know, you know, this is like, you know, Joe, I'm just, I mean, not in a, in a childish way, there are just kind of really nice people in the neighborhood. I mean, now, I'm not a fan of, I think they're coming out on one of those, one of those with us. And I mean, some of the people that we personally, we know, that I know, addition to the neighborhood. And so that's been really awesome, that's been a great experience for, for me and my staff, and I'm, I'm not, we're still meeting people. The, 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 maybe we'll leave that and make the negative questions, but apparently not so, not so that I, Jordan cannot read me, not my staff. So, we'll have our, our speeches and demonstrations moving forward, but so far, it's been really, really awesome. So I have this, we've done, you know, we've had, that's a tree, three of them there for three days, which was working on just cleaning up, just cleaning all the trees that needed to be gone. You know, it's a very, um, it's a, a process, and so we've been to that, or, or all the trees and the, and the, and the dash and things that, that shouldn't be there, you know, where they shouldn't be drawn at. We delivered a few of the, so dumpsters out there, everything kind of framed there, and we made it on a package to everybody. I'm not gonna talk about ownership, but I literally didn't receive any information. I didn't know, I didn't know the names, I didn't know the, the, the histories, and so we were really going to a blind. So we're sending to residents of the, of the council that they do reside in. So, and in that introduction letter, you know, that, there's, there's our community policies, um, sound disclosures, in and out, and applications, you just get all the personal information. But then also, some information, we provided two commercial, two large commercial dumpsters, you know, thirty, forty yard large commercial dumpsters, and we spaced them throughout the community. And to let them know what they're paying, then they're, they're on charge. And I encourage my notes, you know, basically, the dumpsters are full. And we, we, you know, we've been talking, talking deeper about, I'm not saying enough. So that we're just kind of taking it from our, our entry ladder to them, to push the initiative to start trying to step up. And I'm not gonna talk about their success, not for us, you feel we're kind of coming and going. And, you know, it was a place that definitely not lived up to my standards of really wanting to move out of my head. And the answer, very, very nice couple, um, and the reaction was, I mean, we know who you are, and we're saying that, why we start handling stuff. I would ask them, I go, how can we help? And so, you know, we're gonna offer to be, I would put that in there, and help maybe fix stuff up, the dumpster, and those kind of things. So I guess my, my initial answer is that's just a great response from the people over there. Now, we, we, some of that, we make abandoned homes. And there are, I believe I counted nineteen abandoned homes in there that we, that we've listed. Last week, I had Ted Rasmussen, Assistant County Attorney Ethan, and maybe you can help me with his last name.
Anderson.
Okay, and my truck, and Artie from the courthouse. And so, I've got seven titles, two of those nineteen abandoned homes. So we've got, you know, twelve more that we've got to work through the abandoned home process with, so that'd be kind of a court process we've got to go through. And Ethan and Ted's gonna kind of guide us as to what'd be the most streamlined way to make that happen, and the most efficient way. I mean, we understand the process, but I'm trying to kind of bundle things and, and make it a little, make it a little easier. So, we've already started getting asbestos inspections done, which has to be done before we can do any demolition. We've already got two contractors giving us bids on every abandoned home in there that we're aware of. And so, once we get the finer asbestos abatement quote, then we can turn that into Ryan and work through the cities, you know, has a, a program to help us with demolition, which is really awesome. We were very appreciative of that. So, yeah, the general plan and our dumpsters, we've also had a rent increase. So, we've had a fifty yard rent increase, and then, as, you know, working with Sean, as the water meters come in, we've notified everybody that water meters will be reinstalled in each house. And so then, once those are all installed, you know, then we've given them the direction of how those people can come up and sign up for the city, and then they'll be individually red like all the rest of the homes in our communities in town. So we're appreciative of that. You know, long, long-term goes, uh, no, when I, when I purchased the property, I also purchased the thirty acres that is east of the community there. And so, so the long-term plans are, you know, to upgrade any infrastructure that needs to be upgraded, you know, water, sewer, you know, electrical. And you'll pave in the roads internally, inside there. And, and obviously infilling with, with nicer, newer, modern-style homes like we do in other communities. So, I saw my needs from the city, and we've been working with Sean and Joe on this, and I don't think we've really, the Storms Through, you know, our little water meters, the Storms Through is probably a thing that's still kind of a wild card out there. I don't think we've quite identified exactly what we have, and, and what's, you know, where it's going for sure, and the sizes, and those kind of things. Because I do have a stormwater concern out there. And so, I'm sure it's probably a combination of past management, and or maybe the system, and how's it hooked up? Is it not hooked up? Is it hooked up? You know, is it flowing properly in the city's storm? You know, I'm just not sure. So we're still, still researching that, but I can see that as being a potential challenge moving forward. If we find everything that is open, and if we're truly connected to it, you know, where the wire goes, that's gonna be something I might try to address in some format moving forward. The, um, the other thing is, you know, so just today, we started, we've had sixty-three people pay rent. And I think that's really good, and I was, I didn't know what to expect, because I had no, I had zero history, and we were kind of going to a blind. I mean, from my experience of doing this for like thirty-four years, I mean, I kind of, kind of knew, but, you know, I know about what the bills would be and this and that, but you just never know how people are gonna respond. And, so we've got sixty-three people pay rent, which is, I think, really awesome. And so I think we're working today on having the sheriff serve three-day non-paying rent notices. So, I mean, there is a standard, as I've talked to people, I said, you know, there's certain basic things that it takes to kind of get along in life, and number one is paying the bills on time. And so, I think that's probably a, a culture in that neighborhood, but maybe has not been very, very reinforced. And so, unfortunately, or fortunately, we're gonna have to reinforce that. And, so one of the things that, that maybe I could use some help, and our, and our team could use some help with is identifying, you know, some, some local people that might be able to give some people, you know, some assistance. You know, some good people that, that truly need some assistance. You know, I've been visiting with Ryan, we do have a lady out there that has some mental health issues. And, you know, contrary to popular belief, I mean, you know, we're not mean people, and I'm not a mean person, you know, we have a heart and we care for our residents, you know, but there are certain principles in life that people have to, you know, adhere to. And so, you know, for that particular person, you know, we talked to Ryan, that, you know, that particular person's gonna need some help. And unfortunately, you know, the, it's gonna come to a point where that home's gonna get removed, then she, that, that person's kind of squatting in, and that person's gonna need some help. And we've got some other people that, that I don't know, that at some point, it's just gonna come down to, you know, it kind of is what it is, that you gotta pay your rent. If you can't afford it, then, you know, and I kind of, and not, not to sound cold or hard about it, but, you know, I kind of relate to owning a horse. Now, if you can't afford to feed, you probably shouldn't own the horse. And, some people that, if they can't afford to pay their rent in, you know, in a neighborhood where they own their home, they should probably be renting someplace where they don't have the expense and, and the, and the overhead of caring for their home. You know, with the landlord, we do that for them. So, anyway, if we, I don't know who we would visit with, you know, we certainly want to help people as much as we can, and point them toward, you know, direction where they can get some assistance, if there's any assistance available for them. So, and with that being said, I guess I would take any questions.
Mike, you said, did sixty-three pay?
Mm-hmm.
Estimate ballpark, maybe you guys don't know exactly for sure, what do you think viable residences out there right now? Not including the squatters, the abandoned, you have a pretty close.
Well, abandoned homes, we're not counting. So, I mean, sixty-three out of ten, how many are working on to do the four, the three-day notices we served?
I had twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so.
Ninety-ish.
I mean, that's, yeah, more than I would have imagined, to be true. Now, a few of those, a few of those might be some houses that maybe it looks like something might be living in, but maybe they're not, you know it.
Right.
So, so really, this first month, month and a half, is really gonna give us an opportunity to kind of get our feet on the ground out there and kind of see who's who. So, but I will tell you, amongst our team, we are really excited about it. I mean, I, I'm really enthusiastic about the project, and I just, you know, I think we just have, we're just kind of seeing where it can be a few years down the road. And I'm excited about that.
Me too.
So, you know, and, and there's, there's gonna be a few skirmishes along the way, and, and that's okay, I don't, I don't mind those, and I don't back up from those. And, but it's all, it's really, really good, and, so, and we're really excited about it.
So, my next question would be, without expanding into your thirty acres that you said you got, how many lots do you estimate you have out there, viable lots, that you could have homes?
Well, and, and I haven't, I haven't got that far. And, well, I always probably got the far, I think right now is a hundred, like a hundred and nine lots that are, that are a hundred and nine, a hundred and ten, that maybe, that we got a map for.
Okay.
You know, but some of those lots will probably be combined because they're too small, you know, and so we might, we might take two lots and make one lot, you know? And, so it'll take some, you know, when we get to the point of, of wanting to pave the roads, there'll be a little redesign going on, you know, with the way they've got their parking, and we'll probably do it in a more traditional format, like I've got in my newer communities, you know, over at Heather Glen, where they'll, you know, have a twenty-four foot road going on in the middle, and each, each unit will have their own two-car off-street parking pad, versus having one continuous parking pad in front of all the houses. We'll need that to get some extra, you know, dimension in there for me to get my proper setbacks. So, so, you know, if I was, if I was guessing, we might end up with eighty-five or ninety in there, you know, in that, in that range, eighty, maybe, eighty-five? So, we'll just kind of take a little more measuring and, and kicking around out there, so.
What's your timeframe for the, the other thirty? Your timeframe for the other thirty to be developed?
Um, you know what, I don't really have, you know, a set timeframe, I mean, it's kind of like first things first out there. Uh, and I still have some ground to develop over our community in the south of Highway Thirty at Heather Glen. But right now, you know, well, thanks to, you know, affordable housing is, is always in fashion, right, Brenda?
Always in.
Always in fashion, um, and a really great sales team that, you know, we're virtually full over there in my second addition. And so if I hadn't done this project, we probably would have added on a third, a third addition out there, so, which is nice. I think, you know, my, my discussions is, and Jordan and I have talked about this a little bit, about what I might do with that thirty acres. And I'm thinking we'll probably pursue going ahead and, and working now on, on getting the zone for home community there. So, that would, that would help me, like, kind of moving forward than what I've already got, because that would change maybe what I'm gonna be able to do there. So, and I think when it was built years and years ago, it looks like it was kind of designed with that in mind, the way the streets are kind of laid out, and so, yeah.
Well, it sounds really positive, so happy to hear that.
Yes, thank you. So, well, it's, it's our team of people that, that get it all done, so.
Anything else? I think that was really informative, and I think we all appreciate the update. I think it's fair to say we all get lots of questions and comments about what's going on up there, so I think it's good for us to be in the know. And I know for any of us that has the closest connection, probably be Barb about some of the folks up there, and maybe connecting them with the resources, so she'd be a good person to connect with.
If I pop out there later this week, are you, like, where, where?
You know what, we can, you know, Jordan has my cell phone number, and you can certainly reach out to us, we'd love to reach out there and, and, you know, walk through the property with you, or drive through the property with you, and, and, yeah. And, you know, like I said, we're, we're kind of in the honeymoon stage, you know, we, we met all the people that are excited that we're there. And, so now, the next phase is we're gonna really kind of get up close to people that aren't excited that we're there. You know, ones that aren't paying the rent, and the ones that don't want to cooperate, and, and the ones that don't want to do things kind of voluntarily, that want to show that they want to get along. And, and, you know, we have, you know, we have a pretty good package of neighborhood policies, and, and as I, as I visit with people out there, and just kind of my, my side of my truth is, you know, there are kind of three things that kind of get, to get along in our world and our home communities, you know, that, that I have. And, and one of us, you know, we mentioned paying the bills on time, and that's kind of without being said. You know, the second is, take pride in your home. This has some basic pride in your home, and you don't have, I grew up in a manufactured home community, and so I walked ten thousand miles in the mox system. So, you know, these people do not have to have a new home to get along with us, but they do need to keep it tidy, and neat, and maintained, and be able to paint the home when it needs painted, and put new, new skirting on it when it needs re-skirted. And, so those are things that we do expect. And, so, and the third thing is, you respect your neighbors, you know, to have some basic common respect for your neighbors. If you do those three things, you're gonna go along pretty good with us, and in most places, so, right, Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's kind of what we're looking for, and we're, and, and we've had, we've had a lot of luck with our properties, finding people that also agree with that, so. Anything else? All right, very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing anybody else here for the public forum, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. Move on to old business, there's old business A approved pay request number eleven for wastewater treatment facility phase two project from Williams Brothers in the amount of nine hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Move to approve, second.
Andy and Barb, any discussion? None, council, please vote. This takes us to old business B approved pay request number three for wastewater treatment facility phase three project from Boomerang Corporation, the amount of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Move to approve, second. Dane. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. That's approved, takes us to report, starting with city administrator.
So, we are one week, minus one week away from Pizza Pie Losa. I'm sure everybody in the committee is super ready for that to be done, and so we can start planning for next year again already. So, very excited about that, we had Lincoln Highway Days meeting this last week as well, gearing up for that, it's getting a lot closer. Leadership Nevada also took place, we had a foundation meeting, been working on some development agreements, as well as wastewater agreements with H.R. Green. Uh, next week, we have our Dev twenty-two conference that is in Coralville, so I'll be participating in that, that's usually a pretty good conference, it talks about all the development utility-wise. And then, the last thing I kind of wanted to ask you guys about is, June is coming up, and my two-year anniversary, or anniversary will be June, or July, yeah, June twenty-second already. Uh, so I was wondering about reviews and how we wanted to start that, because we typically do the, the review in, in June for the new fiscal year. So I was kind of thinking out, sending evaluations out around May sixteenth, getting the, the evaluations returned on the twenty-seventh. The committee review would be week of the sixth or the thirteenth for June, and then we would have the full council review in, uh, June twenty-seventh, the last meeting in June, if that would work for everybody as well.
Did everybody else like the process last year?
Yes.
Will you print those dates in that first correspondence, so we can get them out, Martha wasn't clicking up, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely send those out to everybody. And then other than that, if you guys have any questions for my report, or anything outside of the report, I'd be happy to answer any.
Okay, so, moving on to my report, wanted to congratulate NEDC on a very successful business breakfast. There was a full house last week for that, and getting folks excited about what's going on in the community. I do know there's a mix and mingle from Main Street coming up next week at the Camelot, which I might be seeing Steve's thunder, but I want to make, I want to make sure everybody knows about that, because that's another one of those things you're probably gonna hear about more and more as they do more work there. Um, and then, our grand opening had a really nice crowd of folks. I learned some more that I didn't even know about what their future phases are going to be, and getting into things like hydrogen and renewable chemicals for future phases, and so they, they have a lot on their plan. They just have phase one done, they'll be moving on to phase two, which is expanding renewable natural gas, and getting in, and turning on ethanol production. And then phase three will be those other things I mentioned. And then at the end of the presentation, they presented the Nevada Foundation with a ten thousand dollar check to be used to sponsor community events, some of which will go towards fireworks. But, Ray, we, see if they're excited to hear about more money to blow up some fireworks. Hey, any questions for me? Council reports.
I'll echo you guys on the NEDC breakfast, I thought that was a, a good time, and good to see a lot of the accomplishments that have been had by them recently. Also compliment the Rotary, I'm stealing this from your report, but I was, I was there as a vendor for the Rotary's one hundred year anniversary event they had last weekend, and that was pretty fun. Like I said, I was there as a vendor, beginning to see what that group has done, I think they do a lot of good work, so props to them on that.
The reports.
Uh, Camelot Theater, a couple of things, one, thanks Brett, the Mix and Mingle, May eighteenth, four to six PM at the Camelot Theater. Come learn about the, the plans for the renovations. And also, many of you saw in your packet that I E D A, we, the Camelot Theater Foundation has been able to win a two hundred thousand dollar grant for downtown housing, which has always been intended to be the first phase, it will involve some facade improvements, windows, brickwork and things, and then as well as finishing the two apartments. So there can be some sustainable income coming in for the theater while the rest of the renovations are going on.
Yep, that's really exciting. Thing, staff.
Um, water park's been busy. Been rebuilding one of our line systems, and parts are hard to find, but we're finally got one totally rebuilt. We started flushing hydrants today, that'll take the rest of the month. We fixed the leaky valve for Herndon Park, so that's been, that park will be open now. now.
Ray? Where have you had over there, just to make sure everyone can hear you?
Sorry. You're lucky there.
I let you finish, but everyone else isn't going to be that lucky.
You have to repeat it.
Yeah.
Good evening, just a couple of things, we wanted to thank Absolute Concrete, they donated a pallet of water to the fire department the other night, and that was good timing. Uh, we also had a number of, uh, in-city street car accidents that, uh, have been garnering some attention. Uh, I, I can tell you that speed and recklessness were not involved in those, uh, mere accidents, uh, so, um, I know the folks tend to get beat up on social media about our streets and stuff like that, but, uh, uh, really, this is kind of two-fluke accidents right away, and then we had one tonight, so, um, it, it, for whatever reason, so, uh, other than that, uh, Friday I graduated, or Saturday from Waldorf with my master, so it's been a long time coming, but I appreciate the city's support and, uh, encouragement on that.
Congratulations.
After Matt Santana is a first-time dad, he had his baby girl, uh, Cleary, she's eight pounds, four ounces, twenty and a half inches, she was born the twenty-fourth of April. Um, so, Matt will return to work on the twelfth, and, uh, we are full staff, um, we swore in lane last council meeting, and he was currently at, uh, I L E A right now, and he will graduate in August, so we'll get him back in August and he'll start field training right away, so it'll be... Probably Christmas time when he gets, uh, on his own, so hopefully we can keep everybody by then, and then some, so. Uh, Sergeant Branis was away for about three weeks, he returned May fifth from, uh, his active military duty, uh, responsibilities, and training-wise, Sergeant Henderson completed some long freshman intelligence network, and he is back on regular duty, and now that we're full staff, we'll be able to get some more, uh, folks to some, uh, some training opportunities, so.
Thank you.
I know you guys have heard that for the last few years, we've been keeping it together with bubble gum and vinyl wire, but Mark actually did use Flex Seal the other day. We're on spots, so I think you really could kind of root in half and put it back together. But he presented at Lions Club, couple weeks, couple weeks going there, they're in the process and what's going on, but as far as, uh, the street department, they've been running the sewers again, jetting sewers, doing maintenance, they've been starting to pack, do asphalt patching and build concrete patches, and, uh, trying to work the gravel roads, and I was in, trying to get them all made it up from the winter. Can't find any questions, if anybody's got any?
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Okay. Aaron and Erin?
Um, just been working on the rebate payments that are due June one, and evaluations are also due, so working on those, and finish up the budget amendment at next meeting.
Larry?
Our report on all the projects that are going on. You have done, you're overly, I'll complete your, I have worked on paper margins, totally nice couple days, seven days, really.
Do you find anything more out about S fourteen, were we able to continue and delay that for August when we're originally planning on it, or?
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay.
It's, it is, it has some additional problems.
Okay. All right.
Were you delaying that project?
No, um, so originally it was scheduled for August, and that, what they wanted to do is they wanted to start working on it right away, but that wasn't what we had planned, because what we had planned was work on, uh, Lincoln Way, or Lincoln Highway, move over to eleventh, North Eleventh, start working on that, and then they're going to stop, finish some other work, come back in August and start working on the S fourteen, milling that out, extending the eighteen-inch. Yeah. You're welcome. Sorry. Uh, so we were planning on doing that in August, but, uh, they wanted to start that right away, but it didn't really work with how things were, so we're trying to figure out.
Get them go back to August?
Or late July, I, I don't know. Okay.
Late July would be great.
But the issue is, it is going to cause problems for some people, some businesses, so no, no time is really a good time for that, but we just need to work through and see if we can come up with some sort of a solution that allows us to get it done, get it over with, and hopefully figure out a way to get people to the locations that they need to get taken to.
Any other questions for Larry? Aaron?
Good.
Anything else then before we do the closed session? And the next is closed session pursuant to authority on an Iowa Code twenty-one, twenty-five, one C to discuss strategy with counsel on matters that are presently in litigation or litigation is imminent, where disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation.
I'm moved to go into closed session.
Ryan and Jason? No discussion, council please vote. Permission to close. Aaron, are you going to turn this zoom on?
Oh, I never had. What?